Welcome to San Clemente's Video Library. I'm Joanne Bade, City Clerk of the City of San Clemente. To skip this introduction, click on Skip Intro. This video will play on most Internet connections. To fast-forward or to advance to a particular agenda item may require additional loading time. To access a particular portion of the meeting, please click on one of the links on the right side of this screen. The Show Help link below explains various features that are available with this site. If you have questions or encounter difficulties, please call my office at 361-8200. Thank you.
... full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to praise, they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Mark Bowden of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Thank you. And following the invocation by Brother Bowden, we are going to have the Pledge Allegiance, led in the Pledge Allegiance by Councilman Everett.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before Thee humbly and express under the air gratitude to meet together as citizens of San Clemente. We're grateful for the good work of the council that continues. And we pray that Thou will bless the council leaders and our good Mayor Tim Brown. We're grateful for their leadership, their willingness to work together, and pray that Thou will bless them as they resolve and work on the various challenges that face our community. We're grateful for those who will receive awards and presentations and special accommodations this evening, and pray that Thou will bless them for the good works which they have done. We express under the air gratitude for our citizenship of this great nation. Might we reflect this gratitude by our obedience to laws, to the laws of this land, and also to the laws of Thee, Thy Son. We express under the air gratitude again to be here this night, and we do so in the name of Thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Would you please join me in our pledge of allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Councilmember Everett.
Present.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here.
And Mayor Tim Hamm is not present. First item on the agenda is presentation by Neil Peterson, CEO of the Transportation Quarter Agencies.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be here. Tonight, what I want to do is give you a rundown on a change that's occurring on the four toll roads that we operate. We're getting rid of cash at the toll booths in May, and we're introducing a whole new account called an Express account, and I want to go through that with you. We think it has a lot of positives. In other words, all those people that now pay and have to stop, the toll booths won't have to pay from now on. So if we can go to the next slide, please. You're familiar, obviously, with the four roads that we've got, the 241, the 261, the 133, and the 73. Next slide, please. These toll roads, if you can hit the next button, next, were the first in California, were the largest toll road system in California. And we were the first to introduce the whole concept of Fast Track, which now is used in San Diego. L.A. will be used at Riverside shortly and in the Bay Area. So you can travel anywhere in the state with your transponder and be able to use those roads. You can turn to the next slide, please. You know, our job is to be part, to be a regional partner, and 250,000 people a day ride on our roads. And if those people were not on our roads, they would be on the 55, the 5, the 91, the 405. So we're playing an important part of trying to improve mobility in the county, which obviously has a direct impact on not only quality of life, but the economic vitality of the county. One of the interesting things is that 40% of our transponder holders actually live outside the county. 80% of the people that come on the 91 and the AM Peak come from outside the county. So they're coming to Orange County for jobs. So many people call these roads Orange County's toll roads, but really, they're regional lifelines. Next slide, please. So there's a value proposition associated with the roads. I mean, we're giving you your expressed choice. So the first and most important, it's a predictable trip, as opposed to coming down here tonight on the I-5. I had to leave enough time in case all kinds of things could happen. On our roads, you can predict when you will be able to get to where you want to go, and there's obviously time savings. And then finally, a lot of people, when I ask them, what's the best, most important thing about the road, they'll tell me it's quality of life, less stress. Next slide, please. So right, how do we pay, how do our customers pay now? Well, 80%, of our customers use the transponders. And the value of the transponder is, first of all, it's a lower toll than the people who pay cash. And secondly, if you're going to use any of the other roads in the region, the 110 and the 10 now in L.A. County, or the 91 in Orange County and soon to be Riverside County, or down in San Diego, you need this transponder. Those roads do not have what we're going to talk about tonight, which is basically license plate tolling, where you don't have to have a transponder, which I'll go into in a minute. Next slide, please. So 16% of our customers pay cash, and we've surveyed them at length, and they've asked us to do two things. Number one is give us a variety of ways to pay, not just with the transponder. And secondly, don't make us stop. If we're paying a toll for a predictable express trip, why should we have to stop and pay the toll? So we are going to remove cash from the roads in May of this year. So we're introducing what we call an Express account. And what this means is that you won't have to stop at the tolls. Next, please. You won't have to search or fumble for exact change. And I think a lot of people do not ride our roads because of just fear. They're not sure where to get on, where to get off, how much to pay, et cetera. And so we're hoping that this will take that away, because the more people we can attract to our roads, the less people that are traveling on the 5 and the 55 and the 405. In the Express accounts, no transponder will be needed, and you won't have to prepay the tolls. In other words, with our transponder now, you have to fill the account, so we draw it down each time you use it. You won't have to do that with the Express account. Next, please. And there won't be any monthly account fee. Right now, if you have a transponder and you don't use it more than $25 a month, there's a $2 maintenance fee associated with that for handling the account. There'll be no monthly account fee associated with the Express accounts. And finally, the technology we'll use is what we call license plate tolling. We'll take a picture of your plate, both in front and the back, and that's the way we'll know who's using it, rather than tracking it through the transponder. Next slide, please. So to summarize, there's three ways that you can pay now going forward. One is the Fast Track, which you're familiar with. And then the second one is this new Express account. And we think that most people will use the Express account the same way you would use a credit card going into Starbucks on a transactional basis. In other words, we'll ask you to give us your information, your license plate, your credit card, and your, and then when you use the road and we track it through the fact that you've gone through with a license plate, we will then charge your credit card at the end of the night for use. So it's on a transactional basis, just like you use, get a Starbucks coffee. And then we'll also introduce a one-time toll concept, which I'll get into in a minute. So these are what the signs will begin to look like. I don't know if you can see that, but basically, it says you can pay by Fast Track or the new Express accounts. And next slide, please. So the Express account, you need three things. One is you can sign up now. These are, it's in effect, and all we need is your contact information, your license plate, and your credit card, and you're ready to go. So we have a promotion going on right as we speak, where if you sign up this month, you get $50, and also register for the, the Orange County Register, you get $50 in free tolls. It's a joint promotion we're doing with the Orange County Register as a way of increasing, trying to bring over as many cash users today to sign up for the new Express account, as well as encourage other people to use, use the road. So I mentioned earlier the one-time toll. This is for tourists and infrequent users, but you can drive the road, and we'll still take a picture of your plate. But if you don't have a transponder and/or an Express account, we'll track down, you know, that it's you, and then we ask you, and we'll have signs on the road that say, please go to either our website or our mobile app, and within 48 hours, pay the toll. And that way, there'll be no additional charge or any fine associated with it. And at that time, we'll also encourage you to sign up for an Express account, because if you're going to use it more than once, why not? Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, you can go to the website, or you can go to our mobile app, which is the next. Both are easy to use and, okay, if you can go to the next slide, that'd be great. So we're celebrating our, this is really the last slide here, this, we're celebrating our 20th anniversary of introducing Fast Track, and it coincides with this change that we're making with Express accounts. So maybe I'll stop at that point and open up for any questions you might have.
I noticed the transponder you have has the option to do one, two, or three occupants. For people in our community that have the old-school transponders, what's the method for getting the new improved transponder out to the community?
Just go down to our office here, which we've had for 15 years, or send it in, either one, and we'll replace it at no cost.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Everybody understands the reason for the three options?
If you could explain it.
Yeah, you might explain it. That'd be good.
In L.A., they, when they introduced their express lanes on the 110 and the 10, they introduced a policy on how to handle HOV traffic on the lane that requires you to indicate whether you have one or two people in the car, and the toll is different depending upon what it is. So that's why you need this for those two. You don't need it for, you know, the 91 express lanes or our roads or in San Diego. So we wanted to have something that could be used everywhere. So that's why all of ours from now on have this, yeah, have that option.
Hi, Neil. Thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
How do you deal with people that rent cars?
Well, that's where this one-time toll concept comes in. So hopefully, when they see those signs, and we tried to, if you notice the signs, they're pretty obvious, and it's more like a Burma shave. Do you remember the old Burma shave ads? Where you had five signs in a row, so repetition. And that's the way we're trying to get across the point that, you know, fine, glad to have you on the road, but go to our website within 48 hours. The other answer to your question, though, is we're trying to develop partnerships with the rental car companies. We have one now with Enterprise, but we're working, they get one with Avis and Hertz and some of the others, so that when you come to the airport, you know, it's just part of the package. So that's the other way we're going to deal with that going forward. And similarly with the tourism industry, the hospitality industry, trying to develop partnerships with them going forward so that it's, it's just, you know, when you come to go to Disneyland, it's part of your package.
Tell me a little bit about, let's say a person now is an infrequent toll road user. They've got a transponder, but they get charged that maintenance fee every month. Are those people candidates for switching over to this Express account?
Sure, absolutely. Now, but I'll point out, though, that what we're hoping is that, I mean, why wouldn't everybody sign up for an Express account? I mean, what do you lose, right? And then what we'll do is hopefully upsell them to a transponder. Now, why would you want a transponder if you've got an Express account? There's two reasons. Number one, the toll's cheaper. It's 10% to 20% cheaper, depending upon which road you're on. And then secondly, if you ever want to go to L.A. County or the 91 Expressway or San Diego, you need the transponder. They don't have this technology, this license plate technology on those roads. So it's your choice, whatever makes sense for you and your traffic pattern, you know, your travel pattern. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
We thank you for coming, and we appreciate the information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Next is presentation of commendation to David Dendell, retired Public Works Maintenance Services Manager.
Dave, this moment has come. It's here. It's a long walk. It's almost over. How's that? Now, we have a presentation tonight to Dave Dendell, and it's got a, got a really nice certificate for his service to our community. I'd like to read part of this, because there's a few items of note here, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but I'm going to a little bit here. So, yeah, you need to prepare yourself for that. So this is, it's great here, and what this is, Dave Dendell began a career with the City of San Clemente on October 27, 1980, as a public work maintenance worker. And during his entire tenure, Dave served the City of San Clemente with the highest level of competence, professionalism, integrity, and judgment. As a matter of fact, I believe you were part of the repair of the pier in the 1980s, right? When El Nino hit?
Both times, yes.
Both times? See, so you can thank him for our pier, right?
I actually saw the pier off to save the Fisherman's Restaurant.
Really? Single-handedly?
No, it was, uh...
Like, it's better, it's better with just you.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So you're retiring. What can we do, you know? Just take it, take credit for it. But highly respected, and we appreciate all the service that you've done here. After 31 years of service to our fair city, you will retire from our city service on January 8, 2014. Now therefore, I, Tim Brown, Mayor of San Clemente, act on behalf of the City Council and citizens of San Clemente, hereby commend Dave Dendell for over three decades of exceptional service. Now, something to note about Dave is he's got places to go. He has a cabin in Moab, Utah, plenty of toys, am I right? There's motorcycles and bowling balls and all sorts of things that are all part of the whole, you know...
Boys need their toys.
It's the package, really. It's the whole package you put together there. But also, part of this is that he has been a very selfless part of our city staff for a long time, has been, at many times made great sacrifices for the City of San Clemente, has always been a very imaginative event planner, and done wonderful things for his wife Lori, and even scavenger hunt on your engagement ring. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, we have a scavenger hunt for the pension, and so you're going to have to look long. Yeah. So, yeah, sorry about that. It's new city policy, you know? It's good to be, yeah, it's good to be king, you know?
That's all right. Your air conditioning won't work tomorrow morning.
January 8th. Ah, never mind. We'll make that announcement tomorrow. But most importantly, he's going to enjoy all this time with his wife Lori and border of color. Now, one thing I have in common with you is I am also a great aficionado of Costco. It is my favorite place on the face of the planet. I wander the Oz, and look at all the things I can afford. It's one of my favorite things to do, and so I'll be seeing you there. How's that?
That's perfect.
Many a times. So I want to present this to you, Dave, and then also would love to... Oh, we can, see, go this way? Oh, so it's down a little bit, down like that? There we go. You have to hand it to you. Get it officially.
All right.
No. I've been talking a lot. Would you mind just saying a few words?
I'd be happy to. First of all, I'd like to thank the past and present city managers, of which I've lived through nine. City councils, too many to remember, some trying to forget. City attorneys, you're not excluded either. What I would like to impart with you tonight is what makes this community great, and it is the employees that work for this city. This city has character, and the reason it has character is because the people that work here care about this community, and that's very important. Don't ever forget it. Don't take it for granted, and treat these people with kindness and respect. And my group in Maintenance Services is probably one of the most talented groups of men and women that I've ever worked with. They provide a 100% all the time, and they make this community a safe and healthy environment for everyone to live, work, and play, which is our mission statement, and I'm very, very proud of them. And I'm very proud to have served this community. I have lived here, I've worked here, and one other item I'd like to point out is that I have never commuted to work on a freeway. I've always worked here, and I've lived here or close enough by to stay off the freeway. So with that, thank you very much. Appreciate everything, and good luck for the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Wonderful.
And next is presentation of commendation to Pablo Reguano, retired GIS mapping specialist.
Pablo, you're leaving us. This is bittersweet. We're losing, we're losing two really great men, and it's, it's a tough thing to say goodbye, but one of the things we know is that you'll be seeing you guys around the beach and around the town still, so it all makes it a little bit better. Pablo began his career with the City of San Clemente on February 11, 1991, when he was appointed to the position of Community Development Technician. And whereas, because of his outstanding performance, integrity, judgment, and continual willingness to lend a helping hand, Pablo earned the respect of the City Council, his coworkers, and the citizens of San Clemente. And whereas during his tenure at the City of San Clemente, Pablo achieved many notable successes, which included implementing, this is a lot, by the way, so just, you know, just be patient there. Implemented automated drafting and engineering, and in the Engineering Division implemented GIS systems throughout the city, which has bailed us out many a times. You've done really great work there. And using digital map products and utilizing his extraordinary artistic talents to city displays, presentation, and graphics. And whereas Pablo's career culminated on July 1, 2008, when he was reclassified to the position of GIS Coordinator. And whereas, after an illustrious career with the city that spanned over two decades, Pablo retired from city service effective January 2, 2014. Now therefore, I, Tim Brown, and the City Council, acting on behalf of the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend and thank Pablo for providing 22 years of exemplary service. Pablo, I want to present you with a plaque with all of the wonderful things that I just sent here. Come on up. Beautiful. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. And then we also, Pablo, and you're going to need another helper, so Lisa, if you wouldn't mind coming up and helping out a little bit, that'd be great. We also presenting a city tile. Now, Dave, you already got yours, right?
No.
Where is Dave's?
Forget it. Friday.
Friday, yeah. The after-party? I don't want to know. I really don't, no. But this is part of, that's the, that's the scavenger hunt was the tile. That's a, yeah. But we've also presenting this tile on behalf of the City of San Clemente for you. We appreciate you all for your, and all the contributions. I've got all these flags. There we go. We can handle it. Thank you. Now, I've heard many stories about your gifts over the years, but I am, one of the things that has always come up about Pablo is how diligent he is and how intelligent he is about his approach, and I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for the city. So if you wouldn't mind, if you have anything you'd like to share with us, come on up to the microphone.
Well, I'm a person of few words, and I really don't like this celebration, but I appreciate this very much. All I did all these years was try to do my job as best as I could, especially that, and I enjoy the ride very well. I appreciate the support I have from the city staff, city council, and I really appreciate all these years. It's a pleasure to be working here. Pablo, remain in this city. You'll see me across, I live across there.
Oh, good.
Thank you very much, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. And Dave, you're right. One of the greatest strengths we have is all the employees we have that have been working here and supporting the community, and we can't appreciate that enough. So thank you both. We really appreciate your hard work.
Next is presentation of award to the city by Marine Safety Chief Humphries, on behalf of the United States Life Saving Association.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to say, I'd like to just thank Pablo for one important thing he did for me during my term as mayor. We had a long-distance Skype with the mayor of San Clemente, Chile, and Pablo cleaned up my Spanish for me. He gave me a crash course in Espanol, and I thank him for that very much.
Will it clean up your English, too? Would that be part of that?
That would be for you.
You should probably, oh, is that, is that how it works? Exactly. Thank you, Pablo. Appreciate it. So we have up here a very imposing crew. They just keep coming, all these, these incredible people. So we received here from the United States Life Saving Association, the Board of Directors of the United States Life Saving Association, a national organization of lifesavers dedicated to the humanitarian cause of saving lives and aquatic environment, presents this national award for commitment and dedication of public safety and education to the City of San Clemente. And this is a great honor that has been given to our city and really an extension is beginning to Bill and his team here. And so I'm going to hand this over to Bill, and then if you can make introductions and tell us a little bit about this great award. I would very appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you all very much. We're honored to receive this prestigious award from the United States Life Saving Association, and it, it deals directly with our public education program, not specifically junior lifeguards, but our outreach program to the community, our Neighborhood Beach Watch, our school presentations, our fairs, et cetera. And with me, I have Ian Burton, Marine Safety Officer, and next to him is Nick Juney, another Marine Safety Officer. And Nick and Ian are instrumental in our school presentations, our outreach presentations, but we try to reach the community with the important beach and safety message. So I wanted to really thank these guys and the rest of the staff that couldn't be here, as well as the council and the city for their support. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Gentlemen.
Yeah, you got to point it down. There's something to be questioned. I don't know. What if there's glare when you point it down?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Want to try one without flash? Maybe we'll try one with it.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, they do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part 1, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, in which to give his or her presentation. And I do have some cards, and one more coming.
Okay. And I'd also like to recognize a local troop that has joined, some Boy Scout Troop 438. If you could raise your hands. This is part of my unit here. Gentlemen, welcome. It's good to have you here tonight, although they do have nice uniforms. They just don't have them tonight, so, you know. All right, first we have from Capistrano Shores, we have Sue Lofton. Following Sue will be Alex. I'm going to say this wrong, and I do apologize. Mano Kalu, welcome.
Good evening. Sue Lofton, appearing on behalf of Capistrano Shores, Inc., a nonprofit corporation whose members and owners are the owners of the mobile homes located on that property. There are 90 households. I'm here this evening at the culmination of five years of frustration of working with staff on a number of issues and still not having those issues resolved. As part of this, I want to incorporate all of the memos, letters, correspondence, maps, and applications that the corporation and/or the residents have filed. with each speaker being allotted three minutes, in which to give his or her presentation. And I do have some cards, and one more coming.
And I'd also like to recognize a local troop that has joined, some Boy Scout Troop 438. If you could raise your hands. This is part of my unit here. Gentlemen, welcome. It's good to have you here tonight. Although, they do have nice uniforms, they just don't have them tonight, so, you know. All right, first we have, from Capistrano Shores, we have Sue Lofton. Following Sue will be Alex, I'm gonna say this wrong, and I do apologize, Mano Calo. Welcome.
Good evening. Sue Lofton, appearing on behalf of Capistrano Shores, Inc., a nonprofit corporation whose members and owners are the owners of the mobile homes located on that property. There are 90 households. I'm here this evening at the culmination of five years of frustration of working with staff on a number of issues and still not having those issues resolved. As part of this, I want to incorporate all of the memos, letters, correspondence, maps, and applications that the corporation and/or the residents have filed with the city, either city staff, city attorney's office, or directly to the elected official since January 2008. The issues that are of great concern and frustration to the residents is the city's failure to comply with its own ordinances, the city's failure to fulfill its obligations under the Mobile Home Park Act and related regulations, the city voluntarily accepted the obligations to be the enforcement agency thereunder for the state and federal statutes and regulations, and lastly, what appears to be the city's proactive attempt to take the property owned by 90 resident households in the city of San Clemente. I think we've had the opportunity recently to review the entire certified record in the Avenida-San Juan partnership versus city of San Clemente case. And although there are a lot of quotes I could take out of there, I think one that struck me, since I appeared at the planning commission hearing along with the residents on November 15th, 2012, was after it was over, the TV was off, but the recorder was still on, the chairman Lou Alvevera made the comment that after a natural disaster, the city would just be able to red-tag the park and not have to issue any building permits, and you wouldn't have to pay for the property. The zoning has been used, the zoning issue was downzoned without notice to the landowners, the leasehold owners, or the resident owners. The city's zoning ordinance has been used for all kinds of reasons to not fulfill your other obligations. The residents are requesting that these issues be resolved as quickly as possible. They are unwilling to wait until a natural disaster when the park is gone, or until you can take it through other means. Thank you.
Next is Alex Manocalco. I'm sorry, I said it wrong twice. Could you correct me, and I could just?
Alex Manocalco for Lofton, appearing on behalf of Capistrano Shores, Inc. I wanted to provide a little bit more, I guess, a specific example. I've spoken in the past to the city council and planning commission as we tried to get the, as we feel the downzoning done without notice, done without due process to the residents of Capistrano Shores and owners. We tried to get that corrected, and we've been open about the information we have, the law that we have, and thus far, we haven't received an adequate response. In particular, a resident spaced 23 put forward an application to place their home on a foundation. The city acts as the local enforcement agency for HCD, basically, and a direct agent of HCD. So you guys have to issue a permit under HCD, as HCD would. Rather than issue that permit, they received, first, a response from building asking for additional information. When they attempted to respond, they had heard nothing from planning. Over 30 days passed without any sort of response from planning. Until on December 10th, they received a planning memorandum, which said, "Please take your plans to the California Coastal Commission with this letter." The attached was a letter from the city attorney, where the city attorney said, "Make some," what we believe was an incorrect statement of the zoning history of the park, but separate from that, he admitted plainly that the city differs with HCD. I can give you the quote. The line was, "The city believes," it would be the city, HCD's position that the city must issue the necessary permits for the foundation, a statutory foundation. The city believes HCD is wrong. The courts of this state have repeatedly stated that the purpose of zoning is to ensure that zoned areas of the city contain only that class that's permitted by the zoning regulations. In addition, the letter referred to the application as an in-concept review, which it's not. It's an application to the city as a local enforcement agency for a permit. It's not an in-concept. At the end, the permit would actually get issued. So based on those two comments in that letter and that planning memorandum, within the statutory timeframe, we submitted and attempted to submit an appeal to the planning desk. This was a planning memorandum, signed by a planner, and acted by a planner saying, "We're not gonna take action on your project, take this to the coastal commission." We attempted to appeal within 10 days, and the planning department refused to accept our appeal. We asked why. We understand they were advised by the city attorney that no denial had occurred. Now, the city has plainly refused to proceed as required by HCD, refused to act under that permit authority, and expressly mischaracterized the application. So it's put us in a position where we literally have to respond. And as we've outlined, the fact that the appeal was refused, the fact that the city refused to accept the appeal, it actually fast-tracked it. We no longer have to apply, go through the city's appeal process, which is baffling to us, because we presumed it would be better to at least, you know, bring it to the legislature here and have a discussion. So we're baffled. We wanted to make sure you're aware. We provided correspondence. We're happy to answer any questions here.
Thank you. Next up is George Gregory.
Hello, everybody. George Gregory, North Beach. I'm here to talk about, a little bit about parking. The street sweeper drops off our tickets on our cars. I happen to leave at 5:00 in the morning and left a car out on the street. Shame on me. Luckily, I wasn't beaten for it. They leave it in these plastic bags, and when the wind comes by, it picks up the plastic bag, dumps the ticket out onto the street, and they go blowing about the envelope and the ticket. I retrieved several of these and put them on people's windshields and stuff like that so they wouldn't get persecuted later on by the notice saying, "We're gonna increase your fine because you didn't pay your ticket." How are you supposed to know what was in the envelope? So they need to adjust their envelopes a little bit. That's on street sweeping. Congratulations on the Clean Water Act, but then again, the Clean Water Act, we really didn't allow people to really vote on what was really important, was the increase in the Clean Water Act. Everybody's gonna vote for Clean Water every time. Would've been nice if we could've voted on the increase. It's kind of hard on some of us with multiple units. I'm also here representing several hundred workmen about their abilities to be able to park their commercial vehicle, their personal commercial vehicle, on the streets. The city attorney has allowed a unconstitutional law to be written and enforced by the Orange County Sheriff's Department to say what kind of vehicle can carry a ladder and what kind of vehicle cannot carry a ladder is wrong. To persecute my neighbors because they have a board on top of their truck because they want to fix their staircase the next day is wrong. To not allow us to stage our equipment or stage our materials on our truck for the next day's work is wrong. To restrict us to use only one kind of truck is wrong. It's a very bad law. I have several hundred more signatures, but I hesitated to hand them in because last time, there was rumors it was used as a tack list. In other words, "Oh, this guy's got a commercial truck, let's go by and give him a ticket. Let's persecute him. Let's bust him in the jaws. Let's kick his butt, because we don't like him because he has a ladder on his truck." This law has got to come up, it's got to be changed, amended, or I am gonna become a lawyer and take you guys to court. I'm up to here with it. I have a complaint here. Paul wants to receive it right now, or we can wait, but I've never seen such a mean, nasty law in my life. It's got me really upset, if you can tell, and I think you guys should reconsider this thing. It all forces us into bans and stuff. You can have a ladder on a car, but you can't have one on a truck? Come on. My neighbors can't carry a piece of wood to fix his own house? He gets a ticket? And this is really mean. You know how we feel about the Orange County sheriffs anymore? We used to love those guys and support them, but now they're lurking around in front of our house, issuing citations while somebody's pulling the wires out of the sports park. It's misappropriation of manpower, and it's also unconstitutional. It should be a simple thing for you to read and understand that, sir. So maybe you guys need to look at a new city attorney. Anyways, I'm up. Three minutes, I covered three things. I have several hundred other signatures, but like I say, I hesitate to hand them in. And one of the comments last time is, "Some of these signatures are from out of town." What are we gonna do, build a wall around San Clemente? The DBA wouldn't even put up with that. Any questions?
Thank you, George. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Everett Skilman. Mr. Skilman, you got on here an item regarding 7A. We're not quite sure if this is regarding the rooftop grill?
Uh, I guess it's never heard of.
Okay, that item has been continued for tonight. Did you still want to say? It's on the agenda, but it's been, are we, well, we're gonna vote. If you'd like to say your comments, then you can wait till the item is up, or... We'll still vote on it tonight, but there's a question as to whether or not we can...
I just wanted to speak real quick regarding Resolution 02-14, which has been used by the city of San Clemente for the purpose of trying to impose upon an applicant on the rooftop grill project $9,800 of Rattan and Tucker's fees, as basically, as a way to try to get more money out of the applicant so that he can simply have his application heard by the city. I've examined Resolution 02-14. It says nothing whatsoever about attorney's fees, says nothing about legal costs. It also concerns maintenance of the general plan, and as I understand Mr. Gutierrez's application for the rooftop grill, he's not asking for a general plan amendment, meaning that Resolution 02-14 is not applicable at all. There's nothing in the California government code or in any other statute whatsoever that allows a city to impose upon an applicant its own attorney's fees. Rattan and Tucker has one client, and that's the city of San Clemente, and Rattan and Tucker can advise the city of San Clemente to do things or not do things in the city's best interest. That's what Rattan and Tucker's job is to do, and that advice might even be to the harm of Mr. Gutierrez. And it's, it defies logic to, for me to understand why Mr. Gutierrez has to pay Rattan and Tucker's attorney's fees. Rattan and Tucker represents the city, not Mr. Gutierrez. So I also just want to clarify, when you say the hearing's been continued, what date has it been continued to?
We'd be voting tonight, but there was a question on fees, the appropriate fees, and so it would be whenever it's been agendized following the, you know, the fee brought current, and when it's appropriate.
Will the council be announcing the date?
It'll be agendized, and it'll be properly noticed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, are you representing Mr. Gutierrez tonight as legal counsel?
Mr. Gutierrez is my client, yes.
So, okay. So you're, okay.
I would recommend that you stick around for Item 7. If you have an interest in that, because it's an agenda item, there's no, there are no decisions that have been made.
Yeah, sorry, it looked like it came in public comments on this one.
Thank you very much.
Great. Any other cards?
No. Couldn't you have a motion of a reading for all resolutions?
Begging.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Close session report, city attorney.
Nothing to report.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal.
Okay. Lori, anything? Nothing? Bob?
Yeah, I have 6B2 and 3.
Chris, anything? Jim, anything? I don't have anything.
I'll move the balance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Bob, 6B2?
6B2 is the minutes of the Coastal Advisory Committee meeting of November 14th, and in these minutes, we have a lot of discussion. Is Aaron Donnelly here? Is Aaron? Oh, hello. I'm on 6B2-2. At the end of this large paragraph.
I do not have one. Do you? Could you please read the report to me?
Sure. We're talking about the base of the pier restroom project, and in this paragraph referring to you, it says, "She speculated the next two bathrooms receiving makeovers would be Boca del Canyon and T Street, and that all restroom remodels will go through the usual approval process." How did we select, or how are we going to select the next restroom to be done, and why do you think it's gonna be Boca del Canyon and T Street? I was interested to find out why that was.
Staff put out in our request for proposal two professional consultants for the design of all five remaining beach restrooms, and the working drawings for the T Street restroom and the Boca del Canyon restroom, based on what staff believes would be the highest priority as far as the structural integrity of those two restrooms. The Boca del Canyon restroom and the T Street restroom have similar floor plans, and we recommended that we explore the possibility of doing some conceptual design that we may be able to use the same design for those two restrooms.
But do we think these two restrooms are the, are next, are going to be next on the list because they are most in need of it?
Correct.
More so than the one at North Beach?
Yes. The Boca del Canyon restroom has a sheer wall that is underneath sand, which could potentially fail, and that making it the most structurally insecure restroom.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I got one more question for you. And we're stressing the need for a restroom installation at Lindelane Park for the benefit of all beach and park users, especially children. Now, if, I mean, if there's a tremendous need there during certain periods, maybe a summer or three or four months, have we investigated putting porta-potties in there? Anybody spoken about that, or good idea, bad idea?
Temporary porta-potty?
Uh huh.
We haven't. The, after the beach restrooms, the LPFP indicates that the park restrooms will be the next priority after the beach restrooms have been designed and constructed, and it has been under consideration that the needs for the restrooms at the Lindelane Park will be addressed when the beaches and parks' master plan is redone in 2015.
I mean, wouldn't it seem, though, I mean, if there is a pressing need down there, and I don't know whether there is or not, but it would seem like if there is a pressing need down there, should we maybe investigate, give it a try down there?
Absolutely. We can certainly take it under consideration and give you a recommendation.
Thanks, Aaron.
You're welcome.
And with that, I'll move the item there.
Is that 6B2 or 6B?
6B2.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. 6B3.
6B3. Happy New Year.
Check for the video.
And I'm on page 6B3-5 at the top of the page.
Got it.
Got it. And my question is, this paragraph speaks about a particular residence, but I'm using in general, in, not this specific residence, but in general residences in town. And we've made some changes where, let's say a person has a, we'll keep the arithmetic simple, a 1,000-square-foot house, and they would like to add on to it, and their house is currently non-conforming. They can go up to 1,499 square feet without requiring their house to become conforming. Is that correct?
No. Yeah, not with the math you used. Okay. Typically, well, this is a good, there's two, there's two primary examples, and this is all about the application in general of amendments to the non-conforming use codes, specifically as they relate to residential properties. And most of the residential properties that we've dealt with, with this code, are in southwest San Clemente. And the history in southwest San Clemente is many of those homes were built in the 50s, 40s, 50s, and 60s, and they typically were kind of the beach cottage, much smaller homes. And what the codes have done to up to, you know, kind of allow modernization, is allow a 50% increase in your square footage up to...
a 50% increase in your square footage up to, well, that, that's the simple part. And so many of these homes, we've actually had, this has been a very successful code amendment, because we've had 50 applications now. And typically, it's 1,400, 1,500, 1,600 square foot homes that are increased up to about 2,200 square feet on average. So what we were getting is, because the, the way the codes were constructed in the past is people couldn't expand these smaller homes, so they were tearing down homes entirely and building up really big boxes. Now what we're getting is people adding on to the, you know, kind of some of the character defining homes, especially in southwest San Clemente. I think the question that people have sometimes is, if you can add on, Mr. Baker, you, you've used 1,000 square foot, and that's the anomaly. It's over 1,400 square feet this applies to. If you're under 1,400 square feet, you can add more than 50% up to 2,100 square feet. And that's, that's why that particular example wasn't right. But if you're over 1,400 square feet, you can add on 50% back, and we tracked it back to 1996. You can't keep adding on 50% this year, 50% next year, 50% the year after that. So we take 1996 as the base year, and any additions that have occurred between then and now count toward the 50%, and then you can do up to that 50% with 1996 as the base year. So it's not an infinite progression that's allowed. And bottom line is, I'm very pleased with the code amendment, because it has allowed improvements to these older kind of cottage homes in southwest San Clemente in particular, but it's confined and it's limited. You know, there's no incentive to tear down and build up giant boxes, and the homes that have been built are very much in character with the neighborhoods that have already been established. Did that answer your question?
Well, and how did you come up with 1996? I'm, I'm glad that there is a baseline that we're, that we're using, and I, I hope everybody understands that, that my reason for bringing this up was I wanted, I wanted some publicity on this. I wanted everybody, the, the citizens and planners included, to understand that, that there is a baseline.
Right.
And how did you come up with 1996?
The reason of 1996, because that was the last comprehensive zone code update which followed the 1993 general plan. So we will go through that again, but since 1996, we've had two amendments specifically to the non-conforming section. One was the one-wall standing, and then we had a refinement to the one-wall standing that did, did allow these improvements as I've described. So the 96 is tied to the last comprehensive zone update, and then we have had these kind of further refinements that allow these improvements as I've described.
Okay, thank you, Rayners, Jim. And with that, I'll move six B three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant, not recede 10 minutes, and public testimony, not recede three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing and discuss the issues, then act upon the matter by motion. The item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the North Beach Rooftop Grill and Bar. Staff is recommending that this application be tabled.
Okay.
City clerk, could you please, for our benefit and the benefit of those in the audience, explain the difference between tabling versus continuing?
Tabling is to a date not certain, so it basically, until such time as it is re-advertised, it won't appear on an agenda.
Okay, and continuing is date certain?
Right.
Okay.
That's very helpful, actually. Before we table the item, I, we did hear a comment from Mr. Gutierrez, legal counsel, regarding that item. And just for procedural question on tabling this item, do we then entertain or open the public hearing and then, and then vote on the tabling of the motion?
I would open the public hearing just to get on record any comments anybody would have on this, and then once people have made their comments, close the public hearing, and then discuss whether you wish to table or not table.
Is there any staff presentation on this tonight?
We can, we quickly drew some information together, and Eric is going to speak to that.
All right, thank you. Eric?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council. As referenced in the public comments, the resolution.
Eric, can you say your title here at the city, please?
My, thank you. My title is Assistant City Manager. So council adopted in 2002 a resolution specific to fees associated to development and so forth. Thus, the fees that the applicant or the representative of the applicant are referencing 28% as well as a 15% overhead charge. These are fees that have been vetted through our legal attorney, as well as council being adopted, and we've also had consultants review on an occasional basis those fees to make sure that they're appropriate, as well as within the mean of the appropriate calculation for charges. So we feel good about the fees in terms of what they're assessed. It's unfortunate, of course, that it's more money to the applicant, which we understand, and we want to work with them as best we can. We could definitely revisit these fees and look at them to make sure that they're in line and appropriate. I believe the item is being continued tonight because of the deposit fee not being deposited thus to begin the process. They can correct me if I'm wrong with that assessment, but we would probably need at least, I would say, 30 to 60 days to reevaluate the fees, to make sure that they're appropriate, and come back to council, which would, in essence, delay the applicant that period as well.
Okay. Any questions for Eric? No? Okay. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Then I'll go ahead and note in the hope in the public hearing. Do we have any cards on this item, Joanne?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and note that during the comments period previous to this item, we had Mr. Everett who, who spoke to us on behalf of Mr. Gutierrez and made his comments. Was it Everett? Did I get that correct?
Everett Skelman.
Everett Skelman. Excuse me. I, I'm on a first-name basis already, Mr. Skelman, so, Mr. Skelman's on behalf of Mr. Gutierrez. So if there's no public comments on this item, we'll go.
[inaudible]
Yeah, there we go. Works out well. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yeah, okay. All right, so with that, do we, what's the council's pleasure?
Well, just for discussion purposes again, in the past, we've continued it, right? And continuance means that we have a date specific, then we can move forward. What are the implications again of tabling? That it has to be re-advertised and re, is that what I thought I heard?
Yeah, the, once a matter is tabled, to bring it back to the city council, then it's simply re-advertised, public notices provided, the way the code requires public notice to be provided, and it's put on the agenda at least 72 hours before the meeting.
My concern with tabling is, is just, we've been involved in this process with this project for quite a while now, and it just seems like we keep on adding time and time and time to it, and, you know, some of us, I think, were actually ready to, to vote on it over a month ago.
Jim, while I completely agree with you, you used a term in there that I don't quite agree with, and you said "we," inferring "we" as a group up here, have been dealing with this process. I don't think "we" has been the hindering part of this process up to this point. So other than that, I agree with you, but I think, like you said, some of us are ready to make a decision on this and have been, so.
I think tabling, in fact, is appropriate in this situation because of the extensive time that's been invested. All of us have visited the project, all of us have received the elevations and the design pieces, done all the study, and that only is the tip of the iceberg when I begin to appreciate how much staff time has been invested in this project, and it takes two to get a project to the finish line, and I'm feeling like, for whatever reason, the applicant, we'd be doing the applicant a favor by tabling it and taking the time pressure off so that they can get things like the parking worked out and the finances as outlined by the Assistant City Manager. So I'm happy to make a motion for staff's recommendation to table the application.
I'll second that.
I also agree with the tabling. I, I do think that, Jim, I'd like to vote on it, but we, we receive letters of continuance each time this item has come before us in the past few months, and so, you know, I, there, there were questions that I had regarding the project that, that need to be answered, and I'd also support tabling the item until we can get those questions answered and make sure that the project is appropriate and is built and scaled. So I'll go ahead and bring it to vote, then. All those in favor of tabling the item?
I just want to make one more comment. This is without prejudice, just if the applicant can walk in our shoes for a moment. This whole agenda, this whole evening was set aside for deliberation on your project and other things that are matters of city business were delayed to later in the year because it was expected this was going to require, you know, be the centerpiece of this evening, and so basically, a whole evening is, you know, not being used as productively as it could. So it's without prejudice, but I would, and I hope it's with understanding that we're trying to run a business, which is the city.
All those in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Passes four one with Everett opposed.
Rural Communications, Part Two. I have not received any cards. City manager?
No reports. Actually, you know what? I, I did just want to point out, and I think council obviously is aware of the new screens. I think they're working out pretty well. Everybody can see those pretty well. We can turn them. It's going to improve our, our video to the TVs out for the audience, et cetera, and you're going to be seeing further improvements as we go along, but so this is step one. It's a problem over here because I keep turning this way, and then I realize that I come up that way. And of course, the guys in the center now, they have to turn it. Yeah, exactly. It's a, it's a decision. It's a decision, yeah. I just kind of wanted to point that out. It's, it was a project that took a little while, and our IT staff and maintenance staff did a great job in, in preparing it. I noticed that. I was looking up there for the clock, and I, it's missing in action.
It's down there.
Excellent.
I think we just forgot. Yeah. City attorney?
Nothing.
Councilmember Roundtable?
I have two items. One, I'm going to do from the dais here. This is a small update from OCTA, and I just wanted to let folks know that the, in the long-term transportation plan, the high occupancy vehicle piece from Pico to the San Diego County is now being incorporated, and so this is real good for us because it'll avoid the bottleneck at Pico, and it'll also provide flow as San Diego County widens their freeway. And I especially wanted to thank then-mayor Baker for representing this need as a stakeholder because that helped move the ball forward, so that's good. On a different note, this Saturday, we're going to be doing, I've got a little slide, the inaugural hike to the San Clemente Summit. Woo, woo, woo! And I'm inviting my colleagues to join me.
You used the word inaugural. Does that mean that that's going to be?
Well.
Repeating with frequency?
With frequency, and I'll tell you why. Because it's not necessarily a beautiful hike. The views are beautiful, but what I'm hoping is that the citizens that go along will be inspired. You know, we have the Boy Scout that's going to be putting a bench at the top and some other things. I'm bringing my Garmin so we can figure out exactly what the distance is because, and verify the 1,008. Someday, we're going to have a survey marker up there, you know, one of those little bronze things.
Are we going to have Sherpas and oxygen tanks? Because I don't think I can make it without.
No, but if you'd like, I'll get a bicycle, I'll get Brenda with a bicycle, and she can pedal you up there. But I hope, I am, any or all of you can join us. It's about three miles, it's probably a little bit less, but it is elevation, and definitely closed-toed hiking shoes, even though the critter season is off right now, and it's supposed to be a beautiful day. So I hope you can all join us.
Can we run it instead of hiking?
You can run it, yeah. Oh, and I'm bringing my father's San Clemente flag with me for a photo op, so if anybody wants to have their picture taken with the flag up there, it'll be there.
Very nice. Thank you. Bob?
Yes, and on the way back from the hike, stopped by the, was such a great segue. Stopped, stopped by the San Clemente High School blood drive done by the San Diego Blood Bank this Saturday from eight to one, and they'll be in the parking lot. I will be there at nine o'clock, so see you there. And just want to remind everybody, blood drives are a great thing. They're very, a great way to save somebody's life, so. On your way back from the hike, I'm sure the whole town will be there.
Snacks.
There, of course, there are snacks, always.
Bob, are we donating the playlists to dogs, or are the dogs donating to us?
I.
I'm a little confused with the photo here.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't, yeah, I don't think that it's, so you can live, so people can live longer to take care of their dogs.
Oh, okay.
That's what it is. We, I just wanted to share one thing with the folks at home in the city council. I had, I had this, I thought it was some more plans for another project in town. I had this in my, in my mailbox here at the city today, and what it was, was a, it's the biggest, we occasionally get thank you notes from different folks around town for different kind of things that go on, but. This is from the, this is from all the tennis players at Benita Canyon who really appreciated the city council's, the city council's decision to rehab those tennis courts down there. I took complete credit for this, although it was all Parks and Recreation and engineering that really did all the heavy lifting on, on this. I want to thank Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec and, and engineering for all their good work on this, but I wanted to, I wanted to make sure everybody saw that. That was, that was very nice, so. The residents liked their tennis courts at Benita Canyon, so. Thank you, city council.
Okay. I, I'll just go really quickly. I only have one item tonight. It's a request regarding the general plan. You know, I'd like to make a request to renotice and to reschedule the general plan adoption for the Fourth of February, so that for this next meeting, we can consider the redesignation of a portion of the Shore Cliffs Golf Course that we designated from resort hotel to, I believe it was a residential zoning change, and it's to discuss the implications of, and the impact on the continued operation of the golf course. And so I'd like to make sure that we are properly considering that item before the adoption of the general plan. So if there's anybody who's opposed to that, I'd like to request that we consider that the next meeting. Paul, is that something we can do?
Okay. Great.
Sorry, I had my mic on. Yes, February the Fourth works very well.
Okay, so February 4th would be the general plan adoption, and then this next meeting will be the discussion regarding the Shore Cliffs Golf Course. That's it for me. And we have a, is this the second reading, Joanne?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do I just read it?
Yes, this is the second reading ordinance, 1577 Clean Ocean Fee Program.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1577 entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, adopting a revised Chapter 13.34 of the San Clemente Municipal Code entitled Clean Ocean Fee Program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Passes five zero. Okay. Chris?
Okay, we're just clarifying on the, on the general plan. At the next meeting, you're.
The next meeting is for discussion of the zoning change for the Shore Cliffs Golf Course, and then for the general plan adoption meeting would be for the.
I would need to advertise that. I wouldn't have time to advertise it for the next meeting.
Yes.
Can we have that discussion on the?
Why not?
I need three weeks to advertise. It takes a week to get it into the newspaper.
Four.
And then 10 days after that, so it's about three weeks.
For a general plan or for the Shore Cliff item?
If I'm advertising Shore Cliff separately, we already have the general plan continued to January 21st.
Okay.
The way it currently exists, it's, it's continued. If I need to advertise Shore Cliff separately to make a new notification, I, I can't get that done by January 21st.
We don't have to, because it's part of the general plan, and we're already continuing the general plan to that day, and we're just going to discuss a portion of the general plan. We were going to separate the items. Well, that's your, that's my, I, I really wanted to separate the two discussions.
Okay.
So we go February the Fourth or February the 20, what is it, the 15th?
18.
Okay. None of them.
Is that?
None of them.
Is that really true in the 21st century that you need three weeks to notice?
Yeah. You guys can set this up?
We need, we need seven days for the Sun Post News.
Jim says he can do it.
And then the law requires 10 days.
Oh.
After that.
Oh, okay. Never mind. You can't do it. Right there, Lori.
And, and the general plan does have to appear on January 21st. It will be on the agenda, the current general plan, because it was continued to January 21st. So you can continue that. It, it's the Shorecliffs element.
Okay, so we, then I would ask that we continue the item from the 21st to the next possible council meeting, and that we reconsider the Shorecliffs Golf Course zoning redesignation at the earliest appropriate time.
And that there is time to pub, to publicly notice that.
I could advertise it for February 4th.
If, if that's what is the earliest possible time, then yes.
Could we, if we did the both on, couldn't we do both on February the Fourth? Both the items instead of separating?
We, well, you certainly legally could, but if you wanted to have a separate discussion that was not part of the general plan discussion, then you would, we'd have to go the Fourth and then the, two weeks after that.
I'm not sure actually why we would have to, I mean, you could separate them at the meeting of the Fourth, I guess, is what I'm suggesting. Does that not, does that not work?
I would like to discuss the Shorecliffs as possible. We can discuss the timing of the general plan discussion during our continuance. Is that correct at the next meeting? Can't we address the continuance and the date, the appropriate date for discussion of that?
That works.
So I'd like to discuss the Shorecliffs item, and then we can discuss when, when the timing of the general plan adoption will occur at that time during the continuous discussion. Is that clear?
Okay, so I'm, I'm advertising Shorecliffs, though.
Yes.
Right away for February 4th, and then at the next meeting, January 21st, we'll discuss the date.
Discuss the continuance of the general plan adoption.
Okay.
As to whether or not that would occur on the Fourth or the 15th, whenever it would be.
Understood. Okay.
And with that, I move that we adjourn to the next regular council meeting, which will be held on January 21st, 2014, in the council chambers located at 100 Avenue at Presidio, San Clemente, California. Closed session items will be considered at 5:00 PM. The business meeting will commence at 6:00 PM. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.